Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 15th, meeting of the Dover Area School Board. If you'd please join me in rising for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is Ben Coe. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahouser?
Here.
Eight members present.
Okay, first up is our reports from our student board representatives, Sarah and Sophie.
From Dover Elementary School, Dover Elementary would like to congratulate Adley Eiler for being named Arts Sonia.com's Artist of the Week. Arts Sonia is an online portfolio of student artwork and is utilized by students, teachers, and parents around the country. Visitors to the website were able to vote on the best artwork from the week, and Adley's piece was selected for the week of April 30th. All elementary schools are excited to celebrate Fun Day this Friday, May 18th. Thanks to our PTOs for organizing this event and to all of the high school students that volunteered to help. From bounce houses to field games to wonderful snacks, it is sure to be a great day for everyone involved. Our spring music concert is next Tuesday, May 22nd, beginning at 6:30 in the multipurpose room at Dover Elementary. Our band and choral students are excited to show off their musical growth from the year. May 25th will be our awards assembly and sixth grade recognition program. Students will be congratulated on their hard work from this past school year, and we will acknowledge all of the effort our sixth grade students put into the education at Dover Elementary. At LIB, LIB families were entertained with our outstanding LIB Fine Arts Night on Wednesday, May 9th. Instrumental and choral ensembles performed in the multipurpose room. Technology projects were streaming in the computer lab, and creative designs and art projects were displayed throughout the hallways and library. A QR code scavenger hunt engaged our visitors, ending in a prize for correctly answering all 10 questions. Thank you, Ms. Rivers, Mrs. Storms, and Mrs. Kunkel. Four teams from LIB participated in the New York County Envirothon competitions this month. Two teams represented LIB at the third and fourth grade competition on May 8th, and two teams represented LIB at the fifth and sixth grade competition on May 2nd. The team earned a bronze level award and a gold level award. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Judy will be taking a team of students to the Connect State Competition this Friday at Harrisburg University. The students previously won the Connect Challenge Regional Competition at the LIU in February, which advanced them to the state level. They would be modifying and perfecting their design of a remote-controlled motorized grass cutter and waste composter. Thank you to our wonderful PTO for organizing a fun-filled evening at the PTO May Fest on May 4th and preparing for an exciting Field Day this Friday, May 18th. Students in grades K through 3 will participate in our STEAM Carnival on May 24th, and the grades 4 through 6 students complete in the STEAM Showdown Event held on Friday, May 25th. At North Salem, the 5th grade students participated in the Outdoor Education Program last week on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. The students really enjoyed participating in the outdoor education activities. Fun Day will be held on Friday, May 18th, at North Salem Elementary. This year, our theme for Fun Day is Renaissance. A special thanks goes out to the PTO and high school students who will be volunteering their time to make this event possible. Our kindergarten screening team was very busy last week and held individual kindergarten screening sessions at each elementary school. Parents were also introduced to many community and support organizations throughout the screening. A special thank you goes out to the kindergarten screening team in Kirsten Johnson for organizing this event for our newest students and parents. The North Salem PTO and 6th grade team will be hosting a celebration for all 6th graders on May 31st. Make us Dover proud as you move on to 7th grade at the intermediate school.
And picking up for Wagglestown, the month of May has brought many fun and educational field trips, including the Whittaker Center for Grade 6, Gettysburg for Grade 5, Zoo America for Grade 2, and Hands-on House for Grade 1. On Friday, May 18th, Wagglestown Elementary students will participate in fun and Field Day activities. Wagglestown would like to thank all the parent and high school student volunteers for making this annual event an awesome experience for our students. Wagglestown has a few Dover Proud events coming up at the end of the year. Activities include a Proud Award Assembly, a Soaring Eagle Luncheon, and Proud Variety Show Assembly. On Thursday, May 31st, the 6th grade class will commemorate the conclusion of their years as elementary students by participating in many fun events at the 6th grade celebration. For the intermediate school, the IS held the monthly Proud Activities on Monday, April 30th, 2018. The 7th grade field trip to the York Revolution Education Day was held on Wednesday, May 2nd. The Spring Spirit Assembly was held on Friday, May 4th. Students participating in spring sporting events, band and chorus, third quarter honor roll and distinguished honor roll were all honored. Students in 8th grade who earned honor roll and distinguished honor roll status for third quarter received a pizza lunch at the park. The event was held on Friday, May 11th. The 8th grade academic awards ceremony will be held on Thursday, May 24th, at 7:00 PM. And the fourth quarter Proud Event will be held on Friday, May 25th, and this event will be a team talent show. Lastly, for the high school, our first annual Eagle Excellence Awards were held the first week of May. We recognized over 175 students for achievements in academics, athletics, community service, and arts. The senior scholastic awards will be held tomorrow night. We will be recognizing seniors who are receiving scholarships and end-of-year recognitions. Our resurgence team will be holding an end-of-year celebration on June 5th. Students will be outside celebrating a successful school year and wishing each other well for the summer. Graduation will be held on Saturday, June 2nd. We hope each of you is able to join us for this celebration of the class of 2018. And lastly, Rachael Fink was named to the All-State Girls Basketball Team. She will continue her career in college next season. Thank you.
Any questions from our board members tonight? Okay, thank you, ladies. Before you go, we would move on to our next part of our presentations and celebrations tonight. And we would like to thank the two of you for all that you have done this year to serve as our student representatives to the board. We have a small token of our appreciation for you up here, so if you want to meet me in the front, we have some certificates for you. Okay. For Sarah, we have a certificate and a... Thank you very much. And for Sophie, we have a certificate for you as well, but don't go anywhere because I have to say a few things about you. I need my computer because this is a very lengthy list. For those of you that don't know a little bit about Sophie, our senior here, she is a four-year member, a two-year captain of the high school swimming and diving team, a three-year member and president the last few years of the high school student council, a two-year student representative of the Dover Area School Board. She's won multiple awards for her writing and poetry, including the National Scholastic Writing Award most recently. That's very exciting. She is a student intern and learning support classroom. She is also an academic All-American in swimming. She is a student leader in her youth group at church and assistant Sunday School teacher, a writer for the New York Daily Record in the Teen Takeover Program, a member and treasurer of the National Honor Society, and a senior lifeguard at Green Valley and instructor at Green Valley and Dover Aquatic Club as well. What do you do with all your free time? The most exciting one, she will be attending York College as an inaugural recipient of the Presidential Research Fellowship, which includes full tuition for all four years. Congratulations. With the President of York College, we have a little gift that we'd like you to open here tonight.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess I should just stay here, right?
You just may as well stay there. Okay. Do you have a microphone? Microphone? Congratulations.
Okay, so the next group of people we would like to recognize, every year at this time, we recognize a group of people who have served this district very well and have chosen to move on to possibly better places in retirement. So, I'm going to... Not everyone is here, but I would like to read off their certificate and the number of years that they have given the district, and then we added up the total of years. So, the first one is Joanne Burns, who, 43 years of service. Thomas Caldwell, 26 years of service. Deb Curry, who I know is here, if she would come up, for her 15 years of service.
Congratulations, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Mr. Britton, do we know pictures of them?
Yep.
So, what's up, Steve, over here?
Christina Dabs for 15 years of service. Corinne Denenberg for 12 years of service. Linda Harbold for 28 years of outstanding service. Thomas Harmon for 18 years of service. Richard Janosky for 29 years of service. Deb Kolch, 34 years of service. Vicky Kopczynski for 20 years of service. Connie Lethery for 18 and a half years of service. Sherri Myers for 20 years of service. Deb Euler for 24 years of service, making sure no one else snuck in. Jane Sowers for 16 years of service. Jean Tolbert, 37 and a half years of service. And Kathy Wagaman for 35 years of service. So, what was our total?
That adds up to 391 years of service.
Congratulations to all of our retirees.
They all had great big smiles tonight when we saw them upstairs earlier, and they're ready. Okay, next is our LIB Elementary 5th grade Gettysburg Field Trip presentation from Ms. Colt Rider.
Actually, we have three of our 5th grade students here who are going to share with you a slideshow. Do you want me to tell them how you made this? Okay, so what they did was...
Could you come up to the microphones at the seats so the people that are watching online can hear? Thank you.
So, these are three of our 5th graders, and what they did, they took their school-provided iPads, they took lots of pictures while we were at Gettysburg, and then they used their iPads. All of our 5th grade students were on their iPads putting together slideshows, and then what we did was we took the slides that all the students had made, and we put them together into one slideshow. And we have three of our fine students here going to introduce themselves, and they're going to share with you what they learned. You got the floor, you ready? You're not, here we go. Introduce yourselves.
I'm Natalie Harris.
I'm Faith DeSho.
And I'm Jalen Shu.
You guys talk more in.
Can you pull the microphones a little closer to you?
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
I'm Natalie Harris.
I'm Faith DeSho.
And I'm Jalen Shu.
The Third Day Battle of Gettysburg. The Battle of Gettysburg was fought on July 1st, July 2nd, July 3rd, 1863. On July 1st, on July 1st, the battle began on July 2nd, the soldiers fought at Little Round Top, July 3rd, consecutive at... Picket's Child. Jenny Wade. Jenny Wade was the only civilian to be killed. This is the window that Jenny Wade was sniped from and the grave she is in today.
Civil War Houses.
I can't read that.
I can't.
These little pla... plagues on the house mean that the houses helped soldiers and were there when the Civil War happened. Some of them were hospitals.
Pennsylvania Monument. At the top of Pennsylvania Monument, we could see all of the important events from the battle.
Virginia Monument. At the Virginia Monument, we were...
We were able to see Robert E. Lee mounted on his horse, since all four horse hooves are on the ground. We know that he survived the three-day battle with no wounds.
Sally the Dog stayed with the wounded Pennsylvanian soldiers until they could be tended to.
Canyons. There are two different types of canyons we saw. There are black canyons, and they had short-out cannonballs like footballs. There were also the green canyons that shot out cannonballs that were like basketballs.
Old bullets. Bullets now look different than the ones back then, but that doesn't mean that it's not as powerful. This is the difference between a 2018 bullet and an 1863 bullet.
There was so much damage in the war. Some of the cannonballs exploded in the air that pieces could cause a lot of damage. Some cannonballs and bullets still remain in the walls of buildings.
Little Round Top. We went to Little Round Top, and there was a great view. We learned that the top of the hill is a good place to be during the battle.
Gettysburg National Cemetery. Lincoln gave his Gettysburg address in the cemetery.
Gettysburg National Cemetery. On some of the graves, we found pennies. This is a sign of respect for the soldiers that were buried there.
Gettysburg Field Trip. Gettysburg was exciting. It was a really fun experience, and it was also very educational. We saw a lot of historical things that you would not ever dream of. Thank you to everyone who made this trip possible.
We also had another field trip during Outdoor Ed. We would also like to thank everyone who made that possible.
Thank you, ladies. Great job. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have our high school Mars Rover Project, Mr. Bond.
Is there a video and a PowerPoint that was sent? Okay. So, I was here in October with Michael, and we were asked by Spring Grove to participate in this Mars Rover joint collaboration, where they would build a rocket, and we would build the rover inside of it. And I said, "I think maybe, but probably not, we could win." But they did, so they're here to say how that went. If you could show that video, and then the guys will talk about it after that.
There also a PowerPoint, I think? Yeah, there we go. All right.
All right, so, yeah, we started this project, obviously before I've come before, and we started the project. Mr. Bond and I came to the school board meeting, and we basically just have a couple things to say after the project is concluded.
So, here's our timeline in totals, about a seven-month project. An important date here is December 27th. That's when we found out that we basically had to start over because we weren't allowed to use our quadcopter idea. So, then, we had to do basically the whole thing over in about four months. Next slide.
All right, so, we had two total teleconferences with some engineers in the field, and the point of this teleconference was basically just to kind of show our design and say, "This is what our plan is for the launch," and give them our ideas, and then they would come back at us with some response questions or any kind of rebuttal, say, "I'm not sure if you can do this." On our first teleconference, which was the preliminary design conference, our project was called Too Ambitious. So, that only lighted our fires, and we continued trying.
This slide and the next two slides are an example of the preliminary design report. Basically, it's a report on all the systems, subsystems, engineering design and development that we had to send to the organizers as part of our score.
So, overall, we spent a lot of time on this project, and I have first and fourth period with Mr. Bond, and for a couple months, I was spending almost all of that time working on this project, and we have a couple statistics there for everyone. And at the bottom there, we say 12 electronic modules. What that means is 12 different components that work together.
There's a picture of it assembled. I believe that's a prototype.
And here we have some results of the past launches, and you can see that we're obviously competing against top universities and managed to come out on top as a high school.
These are from the launch day down in Virginia. Up left, in the top left, that's us loading the whole assembly into the rocket. At the bottom, you can see after everything went, how it looked, and at the top right, that's setting up the rocket for the launch.
So, here's a couple of takeaways that we learned from this project, because it wasn't just a quick, put it together and present it kind of thing. It was a very difficult project for all of us on the team, and we learned all of these things together, and I think it was very eye-opening, especially for me, as I want to go into the engineering field, and I really learned how a real engineering project works.
Yeah, I would add that this was a very important project to do, to really learn how the engineering world works and what we'll be doing in our futures. We'd just like to thank these groups. The Dover Eagle Foundation, the Engineering Society of York provided all of our funding. We were 100% fully funded through the grants, so we especially thank them. Of course, the Spring Grove Rockerchi Club for doing the other half of the competition project. Also, the board, thank you very much, and Mr. Wassler and Mrs. Crum. Thank you.
I just want to finish with one or two quick comments. The guys are bringing around some mission patches that Spring Grove had made, so we'll hand those out for the board members here. We have extras if the audience really wants one. What I wanted to point out is one or two things. They talked about working as an engineering group and how they learned to do things related to that, and you might think that that means like doing equations and drawings, but it was actually the dynamic between the people. And it sounds really great now and rosy, but there were times when they were all very mad at each other. I know each of them was very mad at me at times. This was a difficult and frustrating thing to do because it had never been done, but they really rose to the challenge. And I'm not one to talk up, you know, too much, but there are no other high schools that can do this. I mean, I hope you can appreciate, there was a school there called Thomas Jefferson High School. If you Google them, you'll see they're number one at everything. They're an engineering and science magnet school in Northern Virginia. They were there too, but you know what they weren't number one at? This. Finally, I know the guys were a little disappointed that there was no prize money associated with this, so I contacted two local businesses I know, Cherry Street Photography and Al Springs Farm, and they agreed to kick in some prize money, so we're going to give that to them tonight as well.
Can I also add that Mr. Bond, I mean, this took a tremendous amount of his own time, and he was adamant about this from the very beginning and was just so passionate about this. So, I'd like us also to thank Mr. Bond because he's truly given him the job of the place.
I think that is so cool and so amazing, and I could never even figure out the egg drop thing from the roof of the school to be done, so that's just amazing what you guys have done. Congratulations on all of that. Okay, next on our list is the York County School of Technology. We have Mr. Lidle here tonight to answer some questions for us about a potential building project they have.
Just a little bit of preamble. If you remember last month, I had presented to you all the proposal from the school to purchase some land that was adjacent to the school. Several of you had some questions concerning that. So, I asked Mr. Lidle and some of the folks from the school to actually come out here today, give a real quick overview again for you, and then to answer any questions that you might have so that you can make an informed decision on whether or not you would like to support this project or not moving forward. So, Mr. Lidle, thank you again for coming.
Sure. I have no theme music or PowerPoint, but I do have two people with me. I'd like to introduce you to John Boyer, who is the business manager at the School of Technology, and Mr. Scott Rogers, who is the assistant director. So, they would also be glad to help you with any further information. In a nutshell, you are facing the third leg of what is the land acquisition process. The JOC previously had its vote. I'm a Dallas Town School Director, and I also serve on the JOC. I'm the body chair, so that's my purpose and my role here. So, we did approve the land acquisition in the JOC, which was the first step, which pretty much validates that the JOC could seize this need and also can meet the challenges in the operational budget. That vote was 11, 2, and 1 abstention. It then also went to the authority, and that was 11 to 0. The authority is a separate entity. Mr. Delauter and myself are dual members of both the JOC and the authority. The authority owns the assets, and that's the second phase, was to get their approval as well, and like I said, that was unanimous as well, just from it fits the programmatic and the long-term plans for the School of Technology. If you're familiar with our area, land is at a premium. Everything else around us has been gone or taken up and redeveloped. This farm was adjacent to us. The owners had a dollar basis point on the thing. They came to us. We bought six acres in our last building project. We had to take it through eminent domain to get parking and stormwater for the prior project. Six acres cost us $120,000 an acre because of the way the law was at the time. So, this time around, it's an elderly couple. They were looking to dispose of it back in November. It was going to be up for rezone, rezoning through the York Township, and it was going to be high-density apartments and residential use, and that scared everybody, the neighbors and ourselves, that it would box us in and take away any future growth opportunity. So, when the zoning didn't...
There also a PowerPoint, I think? Yeah, there we go. All right.
All right, so, um, yeah, we started this project, obviously before I've come before, and we started the project. Mr. Bond and I came to the school board meeting and we basically just have a couple of things to say after the project is concluded.
So here's our timeline in totals, about a seven-month project. An important date here is December 27th. That's when we found out that we basically had to start over because we weren't allowed to use our quadcopter idea. So then, we had to do basically the whole thing over in about four months. Next slide.
All right, so, we had two total teleconferences with some engineers in the field. And the point of this teleconference was basically just to kind of show our design and say, "This is what our plan is for the launch," and give them our ideas, and then they would come back at us with some response questions, or any kind of rebuttal, say, "I'm not sure if you can do this." On our first teleconference, which was the preliminary design conference, our project was called Too Ambitious. So, that only lighted our fires, and we continued trying.
This slide and the next two slides are an example of the preliminary design report. Basically, it's a report on all the systems, subsystems, engineering design and development that we had to send to the organizers as part of our score.
So overall, we spent a lot of time on this project. And I have first and fourth period with Mr. Bond, and for a couple of months, I was spending almost all of that time working on this project. And we have a couple statistics there for everyone. And at the bottom there, we say 12 electronic modules. What that means is 12 different components that work together.
There's a picture of it assembled. I believe that's a prototype.
And here we have some results of the past launches. And you can see that we're obviously competing against top universities, and managed to come out on top as a high school.
These are from the launch day down in Virginia. Up left, in the top left, that's us loading the whole assembly into the rocket. At the bottom, you can see after everything went, how it looked. And at the top right, that's setting up the rocket for the launch.
So here's a couple of takeaways that we learned from this project, because it wasn't just a quick, put it together and present it kind of thing. It was a very difficult project for all of us on the team, and we learned all of these things together. And I think it was very eye-opening, especially for me, as I want to go into the engineering field, and I really learned how a real engineering project works.
Yeah, I would add that this was a very important project to do, to really learn how the engineering world works and what we'll be doing in our futures. We'd just like to thank these groups. The Dover Eagle Foundation, the Engineering Society of York, provided all of our funding. We were 100% fully funded through the grants, so we especially thank them. Of course, the Spring Grove Rockery Club for doing the other half of the competition project. Also, the board, thank you very much, and Mr. Wassler and Mrs. Crum. Thank you.
I just want to finish with one or two quick comments. The guys are bringing around some mission patches that Spring Grove had made, so we'll hand those out for the board members here. We have extras if the audience really wants one. What I wanted to point out is one or two things. They talked about working as an engineering group and how they learned to do things related to that. And you might think that that means like doing equations and drawings, but it was actually the dynamic between the people. And it sounds really great now and rosy, but there were times when they were all very mad at each other. I know each of them was very mad at me at times. This was a difficult and frustrating thing to do because it had never been done, but they really rose to the challenge. And I'm not one to talk up, you know, too much, but there are no other high schools that can do this. I mean, I hope you can appreciate, there was a school there called Thomas Jefferson High School. If you Google them, you'll see they're number one at everything. They're an engineering and science magnet school in Northern Virginia. They were there too, but you know what they weren't number one at? This. Finally, I know the guys were a little disappointed that there was no prize money associated with this, so I contacted two local businesses I know, Cherry Street Photography and Al Springs Farm, and they agreed to kick in some prize money, so we're going to give that to them tonight as well.
Can I also add that Mr. Bond, I mean, this took a tremendous amount of his own time. And he was adamant about this from the very beginning and was just so passionate about this. So, I'd like us all to also to thank Mr. Bond, because it's truly been a wonderful job of the place.
I think that is so cool and so amazing, and I could never even figure out the egg drop thing from the roof of the school to be done. So, that's just amazing what you guys have done. Congratulations on all of that. Okay, next on our list is the York County School of Technology. We have Mr. Lidle here tonight to answer some questions for us about a potential building project they have.
Just a little bit of preamble. If you remember last month, I had presented to y'all the proposal from the school to purchase some land that was adjacent to the school. Several of you had some questions concerning that. So I asked Mr. Lidle and some of the folks from the school, actually come out here today, give a real quick overview again for you, and then to answer any questions that you might have, so that you can make an informed decision on whether or not you would like to support this project or not moving forward. So, Mr. Lidle, thank you again for coming.
Sure. I have no theme music or PowerPoint, but I do have two people with me. I'd like to introduce you to John Boyer, who is the business manager at the School of Technology, and Mr. Scott Rogers, who is the assistant director. So they would also be glad to help you with any further information. In a nutshell, you are facing the third leg of what is the land acquisition process. The JOC previously had its vote. I'm a Dallas Town School Director, and I also serve on the JOC. I'm the body chair, so that's my purpose and my role here. So we did approve the land acquisition in the JOC, which was the first step, which pretty much validates that the JOC could seize this need and also can meet the challenges in the operational budget. That vote was 11, 2, and 1 abstention. It then also went to the authority, and that was 11 to 0. The authority is a separate entity. Mr. Delauter and myself are dual members of both the JOC and the authority. The authority owns the assets, and that's the second phase, was to get their approval as well. And like I said, that was unanimous as well, just from it fits the programmatic and the long-term plans for the School of Technology. If you're familiar with our area, land is at a premium. Everything else around us has been gone, or taken up and redeveloped. This farm was adjacent to us. The owners had a dollar basis point on the thing. They came to us, we bought six acres in our last building project. We had to take it through eminent domain to get parking and stormwater for the prior project. Six acres cost us $120,000 an acre because of the way the law was at the time. So this time around, it's an elderly couple. They were looking to dispose of it back in November. It was going to be up for rezone, rezoning through the York Township, and it was going to be high-density apartments and residential use. And that scared everybody, the neighbors and ourselves, that it would box us in and take away any future growth opportunity. So, when the zoning didn't, the township put it on hold when they heard that we may have an interest. We then negotiated with the farm owners, and I don't think it was that great, I was the lead negotiator, I didn't do anything magical. I think they were very willing to work with us. And like I said, their basis was very low, so half the money would have gone to taxes anyway. So they really just wanted to get it behind us. And what was attractive is it's two parcels that we were able to take, all but immediately. And we would take both parcels at the same time. Each parcel was 30,000, or 30 acres each, for a total of almost 60 acres. And they kind of wrap around our current parcel. So it works out very nicely for us. It became a no-brainer. We did have debt service refinancing that was done last year for $12 million, which gave us the flexibility to do our gym project, which is currently under design and in contemplation. We originally targeted that for $9 million. And we had a cushion for three other million dollars for other programs that we would see fit. The land came up and was a, quickly became a higher priority, and we're still hoping to address everything over time. So that's pretty much the land in a nutshell. Like I said, both processes have been done. All the other sending districts, 14 have already, they've received ballots like yourselves. Officially, the ballots have been returned, and at this point, it is more of a formality because we do have enough, we have secured enough positive votes at this point. I think the current tally is at... 81, 23?
81, 25.
81, 25. We needed 64 to pass this motion. But we still, we had communicated, I think the ballots were out about a month. We had communicated that the deadline was today, so there was time for you to still present action. This was more, I think, a relationship to make sure that we came out to you, made sure you had an informed vote. It would still, we would still encourage your support or informed vote and get you on the record. So, with that, that's the briefing. If there are any further questions, we would be glad to entertain it.
I do have a question. I had one question last month as well, but by the way you're describing it here, it sounds like the purchase of this land really isn't necessarily tied to the current gymnasium project. Like, I had thought maybe that the land purchase came sort of as a surprise need that happened sort of after the wheels were turning. But it sounds like this is really a, an attempt to maybe put the school in a position in the future that you don't have, you know, housing right next to you. It's kind of almost secondary to the project.
It helps our long-range plan, and it helped the justification, but the short-term goal of the gym still being in design, we have some additional benefits with, currently this, the current parcel is at 41% of impervious area. So right now, we're all but landlocked and built out. So this will give us extra acreage for additional growth in the future. It was more, and the other big thing was, right now, in the current design, we have $400,000 that will be earmarked for underground water tank bladders to handle our stormwater on-site. This now allows us to pipe it onto the adjacent wetlands, and it'll, we'll probably have about, now we'll have some drainage issues, but we'll probably have about $200,000 to $300,000 pickup on the current project, which helps to justify the acquisition. But to your point, yes, this was kind of a fall in our lap and takes off some current pressures, but also gives us long-term protection. Part of, with it also being two parcels, we are hoping that we are going to be able to stage this thing. The real cash flow issue becomes in two years, once we see the priority of the gym and how everything else lands. Best-case scenario, we're going to float this thing itself, and there will be no additional funds that would be required with the debt service that we had. The neat thing about this, worst-case scenario, if we need to flip off the second parcel, that could go residential, and we could probably recoup the bulk of our money back at this time. But we were in a unique position to have the cash now, satisfy the landholder, figure out our needs, and then maybe, we would obviously, we would like to hold on to as much land as possible if we can afford it, but it does give us the flip availability to watch our cash management, so that we don't have to come back to you in the future.
Hello, my name's Ben Pratt. I'm the solicitor for the district. I think one of the other questions that the board had was the concern that the cost of this project kept increasing as time went on.
The current gym contemplation?
If I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yeah.
And the concern that I also expressed to your solicitor was, what if that continues to rise?
Correct.
And is there a stopgap put into that, or has there, is that figure still going to increase as it goes on?
I mean, as of right now, there's $12 million in the bond that we have to spend, and this is about 1.85 million, which is about $10,150,000. And Superintendent Record Dr. Diceley, the JOC is all committed to keeping the project, including the land purchase, under $12 million at this point.
We've had our come-to-Jesus meeting with the architect, if I can be so frank with you. Because, to be honest, we had our, that was my concern as well, as being representative. The original, when we refinanced, it was $12 million. The reason 12 million was out, was the determination, was that was the point where we could, the maximum money we could take without any one of the sending districts having any pain. If we went any further, we would have changed, that would have changed each district's debt service. So there were a lot of winners, but we didn't want any losers. So that's where we arrived at, arrived at $12 million for the refinancing. The original contemplation was $9 million for the gym, $3 million for other projects. The schematic approval was done at first blush, it was $10.1 million. We had a little bit of heartburn, and we went forward with it at that stage, but we, and then where we had concern is when they went to design, you're going through a building project yourself, so you're familiar with these terms, I'm hoping. When we went from schematics to design depth, and they started valuing this thing, the budget really crept quickly. So we scaled it back, we're looking at everything. We're trying to keep closer to the 9, 5, 10 million for the gym. But like I said, and the other projects of three, I think we can manage over time because they're no, they're wants, they're not needs. And with the technical school, some of it can be self-performed, or we can maybe look at a longer window. And you always know your needs quicker than the money that's coming in. So we're hoping that we can spread this thing out where you don't have any impact. I would sell you what I did with my own board. Worst-case scenario, if everything aligns and we can't do it all, and then it still ends up being 9, 3, and 1.8 for the land acquisition, the way you could look at it is at 17 to 18 million that we've grown our asset base. We refinanced it for 12, so that was in essence, not free, but the payments were staying the same, but spread out longer. That would mean a 4 to $6 million exposure. Your share would be 1/14th, that it's a bargain. I mean, we're hoping to avoid that, but we have to be transparent and say there are, you know, it's 0 to $4 million if we don't do our job right. I'm pretty confident that we're going to do our job right.
I think you're fortunate that this opportunity came up to purchase land, because I get updates regularly from in there at VOTEC about how landlocked are the grandsons in there in school. He said the diesel shop definitely needs something done, but by the time you get that done, he'll have his graduation certificate.
Thank you. That was our opinion as well. And if you haven't noticed, technical education is getting a lot of attention from the government with federal programs. It's a great opportunity where these guys are going, these guys are on fire, and they're not going to say it to you because they're too modest. But I'm there to be their advocate, and they're doing incredible things for all of our students. And we're looking at it as, these are our kids as well, and we need to have the investment and survivability at VOTEC. It makes a perfect sense for us to have this opportunity to protect our future growth. I think it's a win-win for everything. Go down to Queen Street, you can see everything else is being torn over and repurposed. There's no, I mean, for us to have this land adjacent to us is, is pretty remarkable. And the comp, there was a, we had a comp next, further up Dewdrop Road, where that was another, I believe that was 60 acres, and that settled at 34 an acre. So we're closer at 83, we have a much higher visibility and marketability, that we still think we got a pretty good bargain. So I would, look, I would encourage your support.
Any other questions from our board members? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Board members, you have the ballots in front of you. If you could take care of completing those and then giving them to Mrs. Banco, so that she can send them in for us then. Thank you.
Mr. Reifer, could I trouble you for one more minute, please, since I have to guess?
On behalf of the School of Technology, we definitely invite all of you to come over and take a tour during the day, or evening, but we do encourage you to come over, speak with your students who are over there, see our facilities, and get to see our entire school in action. It's pretty amazing on everything that we do with our 25 technical programs, and the, you know, model that we have in place that is literally renowned across the United States with the number of phone calls and visitors that we receive to come see what we are doing, because they're taking a look at our student achievement, both in our technical and academic delivery. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
If you want to wait a minute, I can hand you these then.
Okay.
I'll have everyone's.
Okay, next we have our 2018-19 intermediate school schedule with Mrs. Gross.
Mrs. Gross and Mrs. Landis have spent the year really studying the intermediate school schedule, looking at the good, the bad, the ugly, and they have spent the last few weeks really looking at how to give students the most time in instruction, and how to just reconfigure everything so that it's a better schedule for the students. So, it's a pretty big change, so we thought it was important that they came and shared it with you.
There's three. So there's the schedule overview, the schedule for board, and the special rotations. Second one. Thank you. There you go. All righty. The schedule that you see in front of you is our proposed schedule for next year. As you can see across the top, we begin our day in homeroom, and homeroom will start at 7:35, which is a little earlier than what we currently are starting, and it will end at 2:31 for our students. Going down the side, you'll see A, 7th grade ELA, then you'll see B, 7th ELA, and C, 7th ELA. Those are three separate teams. We currently have two teams, but we're going to take our schedule and our group of students and break them into three teams. Currently, we get about 300 students per grade level. This will, this will place 100 students on a team. So, a smaller number of students for our teachers to work with, and we feel that they'll be able to get more service from our teachers. Each team will be comprised of an ELA teacher, a math teacher, a social studies teacher, and a science teacher. And across the grade level, we will have two special ed teachers who will service all of our students. Every team will have an honors section, or more, depending upon the placement of our students. And we'll also have co-teaching classes. This is a class where our general ed teacher, as well as our special ed teacher, are working together to help our students. So our special ed students may be in some of our co-ed or co-teaching classrooms, and some of our students who are struggling will find themselves placed in that, so they'll get a little bit of special services, a little bit smaller class sizes. So we're really very happy about being able to afford smaller classes for our teachers to work with. If you look across, you'll see that homeroom begins with our students, then they'll go into period one. Then you'll see there are two red blocks there. Those are our specials. Every student will have two specials that they will have each school year, and they will rotate through those specials in 36-day increments, which we'll look at shortly. Every student will have a flex period and a lunch period, that's why, that period's about 62 minutes long, so 30 minutes for lunch, and then we have a flex period where remediation and enrichment, and our proud activities will occur. And you'll see that they're by team, so that's 100 students who will be participating in that. So our gifted students will have an opportunity to meet with the gifted teacher at that time for enrichment. We'll look at our students' needs, and we'll be able to regroup our students, provide some remediation, and we'll have our proud activity. Then they'll end their day in their other three core content areas. If you can switch to the next, Jen, the next slide, the next attachment.
Thank you.
Not the overview, but the other one. It's the specials rotation. I'm going to talk a little bit about what those two periods that you saw and read will look like for our students. Our, our goal is that every student will be able to have every special the whole entire year. There you go. So when looking at our specials, we are breaking our specials, this is a, this is a seventh, let's say this is a 7th grade rotation. We're breaking it into those students who are in band and chorus, and those students who are non-music students. If I were a student in 7th grade and look at rotation one, rotation one says that's the first 36 days for specials. Rotation two is the second 36 days, and so forth. So there are five rotations of specials throughout the year. If I am a band or a chorus student, I will have band and chorus all year long, second period, for 53 minutes uninterrupted. That's where I am, period two, for the entire year. So they're not pulled out, that's their special. Period three, for the first 36 days, if I'm a band or chorus student, I will have tech ed. Then my second rotation is STEM, which is a new course that we're offering. It's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Very similar to what you saw with our students at the high school who put together that nice little rocket, so we're actually going to be doing something very similar with our students at that time. Computer, and then WC, which is world cultures, you know it as Spanish. But what we're doing with our Spanish students, what we've found is that it's really a cultural experience for our kids with some conversational Spanish that they learn. We actually want to expand that world cultures into both Spanish and French. So we want to give our children exposure to the cultures of French and the cultures of Spain, Spanish-speaking countries, as well as teaching some conversational language of both. Our hope is then, by the end of 8th grade, that our students will have a better decision-making process about which language they would like to pursue in high school. And then they would have PE. So that would be their rotation throughout the year in 7th grade. In 8th grade, where you would see the tech ed, they would actually have library guidance, and I'll talk about that a little bit, art, facts, music, and PE. So our band and chorus students, their rotations are going to look similar to what they have now. So they will get half of the specials in 7th grade and the other half in 8th grade. Looking down at the bottom, you'll see our non-music students. That looks a little different. Instead of them having band and chorus, because they're not band and chorus, their period two will look as, in rotation one for 36 days, they'll have PE. Then they'll move into library guidance, and library guidance is a new course. In library and guidance, we're going to be teaching research skills, study skills, we're going to teach our children how to study, how to take tests, we're going to teach them note-taking skills, and then the guidance component is looking at careers. Moving then, we'll move into art, music, and then facts. Their third period would be tech ed, the STEM class, computer, the world cultures, and PE. So that our non-music students are receiving all specials in one year. So they will get a repeat of that again. But our band and chorus students are still getting the same experience, just across two years, and they have band and chorus every day, 53 minutes uninterrupted. Our students will then end their day at 2:30, and we'll have from 2:30 then to 3 o'clock, where we can do a lot of things with our students. We can actually do some... do some tutoring every day. We can do parent-teacher conferences, department meetings, and committee meetings. But I want to talk to you a little bit about what our teachers are going to be doing during periods two and three. While their students are in specials, our teachers will have their personal plan period, period two. Period three is actually their PLC time, and this is the power. During that time, three days out of a six-day cycle, our teachers will be involved in interdisciplinary team meetings with Terry and I and the guidance counselors, where we will be sitting down, we will be talking about students, we will be making academic plans, behavior plans for them, and designing interdisciplinary activities. On the other three days, it'll be grade-level department meetings, where Terry will be working with two departments, I'll be working with two departments, and we will be sitting in on those meetings, guiding curriculum, looking at eligible content, looking at the pacing, looking at data of our students from their benchmarks and their MAP exams, and making any adjustments that we need to, to our curriculum. So, that's the power right there with moving us forward, is having that time built into the day. It's uninterrupted, and it's three days out of a six-day cycle. So, I'm very excited for that. That will afford us the opportunity to do what we are unable to do in 20 minutes after school. So, that is our proposed schedule for next year. Mrs. Landis, would you like to add anything?
The one thing that I'm very excited about is that we've actually increased our instructional time. So, we will actually have more time with the kiddos in the seats at Dover Intermediate School. The other thing that I'm thrilled about, coming from the world of an intervention specialist, is that flex is now going to be enrichment and remediation for all, all the time. So, we no longer have to borrow from flex in order to do our other activities within the school. So, all of our students will be able to be, be able to participate in flex with enrichment and remediation. So, I'm excited about those two parts of the schedule.
And that was very important for us, because our music students were missing out on that. So, they were missing out of a lot during that flex time. So, now we can provide them with the music that they so desperately need and want with uninterrupted time, and yet they can be, experience all the things that we do in flex. So, that was important for us to get that into the schedule. Any questions?
I just have one. It's not 100% specific to the intermediate school, but if you're going to change the start time to 7:35, is the high school going to be doing the same? Because they are going to be on the same buses.
We are, we are doing something different with the buses, which actually works beautifully. Right now, all of the buses go to one building, and then all the buses go to the other. One of the issues we were having for next year is with the building project, we couldn't fit all of the buses at the intermediate school. So, thanks to EMB helped us design where half of the buses are going, I don't even know wherever Deb is, half of the buses are going to the intermediate school, half are going to the high school, and a bunch of them are doing both.
And some of them, some of them are just specific to the intermediate building.
Intermediate school. It worked out beautifully.
They will not be transporting high school, just intermediate.
We brought EMB in, we had a discussion, we sent them back, and they came back with this wonderful schedule. So, it worked out really well.
So, the high school kids and the intermediate school kids, if you have one of both, like I do, they might not be picked up at the same time like they are this year, as you're saying, or even be on the same bus.
They might not be.
Our larger developments will have an intermediate school bus and a high school bus. Our more rural, we're going to have them together on the same bus.
That'll be crawling.
That's right.
Just, just out of curiosity, with that change in schedule, how does it look as far as the overall transportation cost? Does that increase our costs, or is that somehow?
It's the same number of buses for the same number of days, so it won't do anything.
Nothing.
So, you're going to run two buses over the same route for ARMB and high school kids?
We might for some of them. But it's not, it's not additional buses, because it's one less bus elsewhere. It's the same number of buses.
Well, if the bus company claims they can do it.
They, yep.
They were great to work with.
They were.
I mean, we, before we could even move forward with the schedule, we had to make sure that that could happen. And so, Mike and Sean, Sean, they, they went back and they worked, and Mike showed up one day at the middle school, and he said, "I figured it out!" So, he was real excited. "It's not going to cost us any more money, and it'll actually be better with the building project because..."
They were very concerned about fitting all the buses.
Getting all the buses in there.
Yeah.
Are this, is this going to make the bus run, run shorter or longer, about the same time?
About the same time.
About the same time. Now, what, so if the intermediate school kids are being picked up earlier, because their start time is earlier, what happens to the high school kids, and they start another 15 minutes later than that, is it?
No, no, because when we were planning this whole thing, we asked Jared if we could kind of steal some of his time, and that was a no. So, that wasn't on the table. So, no, it doesn't affect them at all. It's just the way the buses are organized. That's what EMB did. They just reorganized the buses and are using them in a different way.
And our students are still being dismissed at the same time?
Right.
Okay.
We're just starting.
The start time of the high school is going to be what?
The same as this year.
Which is 7:45?
7:50.
7:50. So, that's what I'm saying. So, if, if the intermediate school kids get dropped off, there's some lag time. Then, if, if it's a bus that has both students, both intermediate and high school students, there's going to be some time for the high school kids. It doesn't take 15 minutes to get across the street.
That, that time is already built into that schedule, because they already start dropping off now. So, like, already our buses start dropping off at 7:30 in the morning.
Yep, yep, it's fine for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question on the, the flex remediation time. Obviously, remediation, pretty no-brainer. You know, you know what the students need, and you can be able to provide it to them. For students that are going to be provided with the enrichment, how are we going to, or how are you going to deal with that? Is this going to be a differentiated enrichment? You're going to look at the strengths and weaknesses of those students and do that?
Yes, that's the beauty of having 100 students on a team, and that's the beauty of having our time, our PLC time, to look at those students and regroup them according to what their needs are. So, we can use our benchmark assessments, our MAP. So, we'll be using all that data to help us regroup students during flex time to offer them exactly what they need. And there are going to be times when we're going to look at specific things that all of the students need across the board. We might decide that they need additional practice in text-dependent analysis, and we may work on that skill with everyone. But again, looking at the differentiated needs of those students in the text-dependent analysis. So, perhaps you're a lot better writer than I am. So, you would be grouped with a different set of children focused on that specific skill, where I may need something more. Still the same concept, but regroup differently based upon my own academic needs.
And it also allows to continue to build the culture in the building, which is so important, because now we will always have everyone for flex. So, right now, we're talking about every other week, having a proud day built in, where we continue to build the culture, and we continue to talk about all of the components of proud and how they impact us as students and us as a community, and specifically our building. So, now that we'll be able to be done as a building in a whole, which will be fantastic.
How much extra time is it in the, in the morning? What's the current start time for the intermediate school?
Currently, our homeroom starts at 7:45, and we're looking to start our homeroom at 7:35.
About 10 minutes.
And we've reduced our homeroom time in order to increase the instructional time within the day for classrooms. And so, very excited about that, and very excited about having our teams working together. Social studies, ELA, a lot of the same standards. They need to work together to cover those math, science, same content across. So, very excited about what's coming in our future.
Just out of curiosity, what's been the, the feedback that you've gotten from the staff, the teachers that have?
The staff is very excited about the three teams and the, and the ability to have collaboration time. We've tried to do it after school, but it just doesn't work. We get hit with different parent meetings, different, you know, IEP, GIEP meetings that we just don't have the time that we really need to collaborate effectively. So, staff is very excited by it.
Brad, do you remember how much instructional time we added to next year?
I have to look.
For the significant amount of instructional time we added to their day.
We did a lot of, like, tweaking. So, like, we reduced the minutes between classes, so we stole time from everywhere, but gained time for everyone, if that makes sense. But it, it worked. A lot of dreaming.
With, I know, in the past, you had a lot of, you may have been on this end of the school, and then your next class was at the other end of the school. Did you kind of work on that flow as well? You're saying about reducing timing between classes so that we don't have that?
The only different, the only, the only issue will be if I'm in PE and I have to go upstairs. So, that would be the only time, is between the specials. But academic, between the core classes, you don't need three minutes to go down the hall.
And what's fantastic now is you'll have your specials back-to-back. So, you'll be going like from PE to music, which is right next to each other. So, we'll gain some time in that area, too.
On the surface, it almost starts to resemble what we used to have at the 56 building, where you had core groups like that, and team, team approach is where you had multiple teachers working together collaboratively with a group of students. Does it not?
Well, the whole goal is to put our students first. And in order to put our students first, we need to be able to focus on a number of students that are ours, that belong to us, that we have ownership of. In order to be able to do that, we had to break our teams down into smaller teams, so they could focus on a smaller number of students in order to move those students. So, the team way, and the smallest we could get the teams, is 100.
Unless you'd like to give us a whole nother set of teachers.
Which we would gladly do.
We don't have room for them, but...
We could look at 7:45. A future, there's a couple teachers. We're good to go.
Maybe you don't have any now. Is physical education eliminated?
No, actually, we were able to increase physical education within the cycle. So, some of our students will actually get physical education twice in one year, where now they're only getting it once a year. So, we were very excited about being able to offer that. Our band and chorus students will only have physical education once a year, but the other students will have it twice a year.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm excited about this change. I think you're headed in the right direction with this. So, thanks for, for all your hard work on this. I appreciate it. Okay, that ends our presentations and recognitions an hour later. So, we're good to go.
It's all good stuff.
Okay, first up on our agenda next is our public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of tonight's agenda. If you have anything you would like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Kristy Harris, 3052 Honey Run Drive, York, Pennsylvania, 17408. I have a 5th grader going into 6th grade, so with the presentation they just gave, I just have a few questions. I saw that you're having, what, five categories, like five rotations? How does that work in a four marking period?
Ah, good.
What you actually have in the grade, you'll see that...
Can you guys hit the microphone, Victoria?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Your line is grading.
You'll find out that two of the specials will actually show up in one quarter grade.
Okay. And then, also, I have a daughter who is in band and chorus, but I will have to say, seeing band and chorus the whole year, and then seeing the limitations of PE also concerns me as a parent. And the art, I feel like, is there any way to more equal that out somehow? That there, seems like the band and chorus kids are going to be missing out on stuff, because they're taking one class all year long for two full years.
And it's actually what we are currently doing in our current schedule right now. So, what you see with the band and chorus students, that's exactly what all of our students are getting this year. So, they're getting, they're actually getting one or just a group of specials per year. They take all of the specials over two years. What will happen with the non-music students is they'll get all of them both years. So, we battled that back and forth. We looked at the needs of the band and chorus students. We found that in our current schedule, they were missing out on a lot of different things, a lot of academic things. They're being pulled all the time. So, it was really important to us and the music department that we actually roll that in and make that time a sacred time for those students. So, within the band and chorus students, they will actually get band every day, and if they're a band and chorus student, our two music teachers have worked it out, where they're going to share the students across that time.
So, then, it's just that they're in, so the non-band students will get PE like four times over two years?
It could, it could. It depends upon the schedule and the rotation.
And then was, was there another class that I saw that the music was, was it, it was an acronym for something that I?
STEM.
STEM.
Oh, everyone, everyone gets STEM.
Okay. And was there something?
STEM, library, library, world cultures, the world cultures. Every student in the middle school will get everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Next, we have Mr. Fenstermacher from the Dover Alumni Association with us tonight. On tonight's agenda, under, under the consent agenda, is to add the Alumni Association as a school-affiliated organization. So, Mr. Fenstermacher is here just to give us a little background on the association and what your plans are at this point.
So, do I have to say who I am?
Say it again, make it official.
Okay, so I'm a 1972 graduate of Dover High School. My name's Jeff Fenstermacher. I live at 2895 DePaul Road, Dover. And with me tonight is Shelley Livingston. She's our current scholarship chairman. The reason I'm here tonight, how many people here, even in the audience, knows there's an alumni association in Dover. Oh, we're doing a good job. So, so this is like an official handshake right now between the Alumni Association and the school board in general. I know, I think we have two school board members here that are current members of the Alumni Association. You have a little yellow folder on your desk tonight. In there, you can look at it later. It's scheduled activities. The two current people should be getting the emails. I've met with the business director and the school superintendent. They were very gracious to me, and our, our hope is to get the word out about the Alumni Association and to develop a better relationship with the school. You can use us, and we can use you. Earlier, you had students up here talking about landing a little rover. Well, an interesting thing happened to me as chairman. A lady called me one day, and she said, "Are you president of the Alumni Association?" I said, "Well, yes, I am." And she said, "Well, I'd just like to tell you my husband passed away." And I said, "I'm really sorry to hear that." She said, "Well, I, I'm hoping that through you that his classmates can find out that he passed away." And I took down his information and ended up Googling the guy, and it turned out, he's one of the fathers of satellites. He worked at Goddard Space Center and graduated from Dover School. Dover School has a lot of outstanding graduates. Someone, one of your students, Sarah, I'm not sure which one, talked about working in communications. There was a fellow that we talked about in one of our newsletters, Tom Detzl. He, he was a Pulitzer Prize winner, and he interviewed the president in the Oval Office, and I'm sure that some people here might have known of him. But Sheila Webb was his English teacher, and there's a lot of good relationships that went on between students and the teachers and the school. And I'm hoping that the Alumni Association can have that type of relationship with the school. Any questions that anybody has, we're willing to answer. We'll be there tomorrow night. Our mission statement says that we're here for fun, basically, and out of having that fun, we end up with some extra money, and we do give scholarships. We have, currently, we have like 300 people on our, on our membership list, and we've given $20,000 since 2011 is when we were officially formulated. And, any questions?
I have, I have a question. What kind of, aside from the scholarships, is there any other activities that you, as an organization, participate in? Is there any certain things that, you know, you try to do as an organization?
So, it is in our mission statement to serve the community. Currently, no, we don't have any roadside cleanup or anything like that. But last year, we had a mentorship program that we tried to start up with the CTE program, and we had three people that graduated from Dover that are, are living in the art world, and they work with the kids. It was actually written in the curriculum, and that's one of the things that we do. And we're trying to develop into a bigger organization. That's why Shelley and I are here tonight. We do, at our board meeting, we have, we actually have scholarship written in. To every board meeting, we talk about that, and it's hard to develop without people. There's a lot of examples out there of what alumni associations can do. One of them that I really look to is Northern School District. They have over 600 people in their current membership, and they do help with a lot of things. Some... Some organizations help run the prom. So there's opportunities that we can come, you know, there's a lot of people that want to help that are on the Alumni Association and we're looking for those opportunities. We're a little bit different than Dollars for Scholars. We're a lot different than the Eagle Foundation. The Eagle Foundation, I think, is more inward-looking, supporting the school in material things and helping the students and teachers. We're a little more outward-looking, you know, what happens after you leave school? By default, every graduation, there's a whole lot of kids that could become members. Our scholarship recipients automatically become alumni members, so.
Mr. Delauter and I were just talking before a meeting tonight about, you know, what happens with our graduates. You hear kids, you mentioned some Dover graduates and some of the areas that they end up landing in and how they, how they serve, you know, our society. And it would be nice if, if we would have a little better understanding of, you know, where, where the kids land five years later and what fields that they're in and that sort of thing. I don't know if that would be something that, you know, your organization could help to provide some feedback as, as we help to promote.
So there's a great need on our behalf of technology, the use of technology. A lot of schools have those examples where they have a database of graduates and they can put their names out there. You know, these are, these are our occupations now. This is what we're willing to do. These are experiences we can share. My wife's a nurse and she's got, she used to be a school nurse at Crawletown. And kids don't understand all the time what a nurse means, but if you simply had somebody that was an alumni that was in the nursing field to talk to, you know, that's the type of thing that we could share with the community and, you know, I, I think that would be beneficial to the community. I'm not sure how you feel. Did I take enough time?
Perfect. Anybody else have any other questions?
No, just a comment that I, I think that the mentor side of things is something that as a district, I know we talk about in the Guidance Committee, I'm blanking on the name of it, but that's one of the things we talk about and brainstorm about is, okay, what are those connections out there in the community that our kids can connect to and, you know, have opportunities for internships or job shadowing and that type of thing? Because that's not a strong area right now for us.
Yeah, so I, I was really excited about this engineering thing because I'm sort of in the engineering field. And back in the day when my sons both graduated from Dover, there was a bridge building competition and my boys went into it, but they were at a disadvantage because all the other schools had mentors that worked with the kids in the bridge building, you know, competitions. And my kids did great. So I like to hear that, that our kids did great, too. Does the solicitor have any questions?
Not for you, no.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a quick question for you.
Sure.
Do you have, do you have a Facebook page or any social media that, I mean, I'd be happy to share, you know, I have a lot of fellow parents who are Dover graduates.
So we do. We have demographics issue with the Alumni Association. We have a lot of people my age, that would be older. We have a hundred and some followers on our Facebook page, but it's sort of hidden. And we'd like not to use Facebook. We'd like to use more of the school's assets to communicate with the people, you know, in the community and put it up there. And possibly use the students and use that as an educational experience for them to help maintain the website and communicate with the people out there.
I want to have you also, I don't know if it would be possible, something like this information to be given to graduates, like a week or so before?
We've already talked about that.
So when you open up your things, you'll see there's a winery in Dover. And it turns out, it's run by two Dover students. And I, I was really excited about that. They're willing to let us go down there and they told us, we charge $5 a ticket. I have tickets. And we just go down there, it benefits the scholarship fund. So I was excited about that.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss some legal and personnel matters and for Mrs. Krum to also update us on some items that were on tonight's agenda. We will be having an executive session after tonight's meeting to discuss some legal matters related to the Washington Township case, as well as the extension of Intermediate Avenue with Mr. Pratt afterwards. So with that, we will move on to the appointment of our School Board Treasurer. This is something we do every May. So at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Steve Cook as School Board Treasurer for the 2018-19 fiscal year.
Shou move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to the approval of our minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 17th, 2018 Board Meeting.
Shou move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 19th, 2018 Board Planning Meeting.
Shou move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. The motion carries. Okay. We will now move on to our consent agenda for the evening. There are a lot of items on here, so I'm sure we will have some questions and conversation about some of these. But at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Shou move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion now? I'd like to note down toward the bottom at 7:24, the appointment of our PSBA and voting delegates. That would be Mrs. Brenton and myself that will be serving in those roles upon approval here tonight. I do also believe that in the appointments category, Mr. Cook, if you wanted to recognize our new food service director, I believe she's here tonight?
I do have that information and welcome aboard. Fortunately, I don't have the screen up here, so if you wanted to introduce yourself to all of us.
My name's Helen Hyler and I'm the new food service director. I'm super excited to become a part of Dover's school district and to bring my passion for school food service here, too.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I can now look forward to filet mignon every day. Any other questions or discussion on any other items on the agenda?
I wanted to mention, though, down under the food services budget, interestingly enough, there's line item there about the price for lunches. And I thought it would be good if we give, you know, our general public and those in attendance here an understanding of who sets that, those numbers, that that's not just a pie in the sky type number that's thrown out there. So if we could maybe have a little bit of instruction on it.
Mrs. Curry, would you like to come in and explain that, please?
That direction comes every year to every school district from PDE and school nutrition. What they do is they send a paid equity calculator to the districts. We plug in our numbers like meals sold and things like that. And then it calculates for us if we need to increase our prices. Last year, we carried over a nickel that we could have used last year and did not. So we used the dime this year because we could have went up, I think, Jen 15, 15 cents this year, but we held at a dime. And what that, what that means is PDE wants to make sure that we are not using our reimbursement for free and reduced students to carry our program. They want to make sure that our paid students are involved in that also, that our reimbursement doesn't totally support the food service program.
Okay. Thanks.
Mrs. Krum, I know one of the items on tonight's agenda is revision to the 2018-19 school calendar. Could you just address that for the public?
When this was approved, the original, the original calendar was approved, we didn't realize that the DAEA contract, the teachers' contract, has in it that there will be no professional development days after the last student day of school. So one of the snow makeup days, which was identified as a snow makeup day, should it be used, that would put that professional development day at the end of the year and then would go against that, the agreement. So we decided, we're just not going to include that as a snow makeup day, which, which isn't a really big problem. The only issue it does is it only gives us three snow makeup days prior to graduation. And after this year with seven days, that makes us just a little bit nervous. So after speaking with Mr. Wasser, he was more than happy to move graduation from, I think it was the first, Saturday the first, to Saturday the eighth. That would give us plenty of time. He felt that he actually liked a little time after the students were done to get transcripts around. So the two things that changed were taking away the one snow makeup day and moving graduation to the June 8th next year. So that's the change to the calendar.
Okay, just a few other things I'd like to note. Under property valuations, just for the public notice, our assessments increased in March, from March to April, by a little over $1 million, which will provide us an additional $22,000 a year in revenue. So that's some positive news for the district. I also wanted to note at item 726, the donations for the School Resource Officer, we have received from three individuals donations to help cover the cost of an additional School Resource Officer within the district for over $30,000. So I'd like to thank those individuals for providing those funds to the district. That's tremendous for us. We certainly appreciate that. And that would be all I have. Anybody else have anything else on those items?
Under 706 resignations there. Earlier tonight, we acknowledged all our retirees and their 391 years of service. There is one resignation that's, that's worth noting as well. Mr. Janoski, who is retiring from the district, is also leaving his position as paid head swimming coach. And he had 29 years of service there as well. So that's quite an accomplishment. So it's going to be big shoes to fill moving forward, but a big thank you to him and his years of service and successful coaching.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay. Next, we have our curriculum and professional development area. Anything, Mr. Delauter, to comment on in that?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Okay. We'll move on to our human and fiscal resources category. First, we have our final budget presentation. Mrs. Krum and Mrs. Benko.
Okay, so for our final budget, that is on for board approval tonight, I want to go just through what has changed since our April preliminary budget. I do have the components of the budget in this presentation. If you would like me to go back through all of those, I would be more than glad to. However, they are the same ones that we went through last meeting also. So I was planning on just giving a general overview of those and moving through the presentation. So in our April 19th preliminary budget that the board approved, we were looking at a $2,045,000 deficit for the year. Moving forward, during our review over the last month, our final budget overview came in at, with revenues at $61.7 million and our expenditures at $63.7, giving us an ending budget deficit of $2,222,223. So what has changed since the April budget? Mainly just revenues changed. We modified, modified our revenues to reflect the changes in the assessment value of approximately $22,500, which you just approved the evaluation for through our assessment. They also were modified to reflect a change in the state property tax reduction allocation of approximately $300. Other than that, all of the final, all of the budget components that we saw in April remain the same through the final budget. If I could just touch on the main ones, the, we are going to hire five additional teachers to support class size reduction and obviously comply with contracts. And we had some swapping of teachers for various subjects. And we also had the high school dean position being eliminated to replace, to be replaced with the assistant principal. On the support side, we had a lot of, we were swapping out positions for a custodial supervisor. We eliminated the aides because of the class size reduction, elimination of the library tech secretary, restructuring staff, and again, replacing the access coordinator and complying with our contractual agreements that are currently in place or going to be in place. On the administrative side, not many changes there that impact the budget. The assumption of a 3% wage increase, again, the student, the high school dean of students elimination to the assistant principal and the instructional advisor to go over to the professional staff. Other final budget components, healthcare, we are doing the funding holiday, no increase in healthcare premiums. However, there may be, in the support staff negotiations, if, you know, their premium share is up for negotiation, our Pizer's rate increases, which we've touched on. If you have any questions on that, I can revisit it. We're increasing our York Adams Academy seats and employee assistance program and also the sub-rate increase. We're including department heads for the high school, or the intermediate school, which will definitely help with the new schedule that they gave us tonight, full-size initiative for the iPad and increase in public communications and social work, social emotional student resources. The final budget presented includes a 2% tax increase of .439 mils. This 2% increase is intended to be utilized through 1.23%, or .27 mils, is the amount that is being put in place for the phase in of millage for the new project. The point, and the rest, .78%, is .169 mils, which will be put in place to assist in funding the increase in expenditures for the general operating budget. So again, the final budget overview, 61.7 and 63.7, coming up with the deficit of $2,222,233. When we look on how that will affect our fund balance moving forward, we will utilize monies through the set aside that we have committed for retirement and also technology. And again, taking the funding holiday from LBT for next year. So our ending general fund, fund balance at the end of 2019 is projected to be $12,873, $73,275 capital projects fund, $11,195.86, leaving us about $24 million. The 11 million, keep in mind, the majority of that is used, is set aside for assistance in our new project and also various capital projects down the line in the future. Any questions or comments on the budget?
Just a question, just for clarification again. When you look at state and federal funding, you did. When you look at state and federal funding, you did level flat funding, correct?
Yes, we flat funded it for the levels that we believe we're supposed to receive in 1718. So in prior years, we went to the level that was funded the year before that. So normally, it would have been 15, 16. We're pretty comfortable with the numbers that we're going to receive in 1718, our special ed numbers. We don't have exact on those yet, but we're pretty comfortable with that. So we went with the 1718 numbers just so we ensure that we're properly using those funds and we're not ending up with a humongous surplus at the end.
The money being used for the capital improvements, is that going to come out in '19 or '20?
We will use some of it next year to help fund the first bond payment. So 1819 will be, some will be utilized in 1819. The ending fund balance you see there reflects that payment.
Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the resolution of the Dover Area School District, establishing the tax rates and approving the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Give me one second, please.
Shall I move?
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any other questions or discussions at this time? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko.
Oh, slipped it over. How's that?
It did not. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
The long distance.
Thank you.
And the motion carries. Okay, thank you.
One note on that, we will see hopefully on Thursday, a vote at the planning meeting for the Homestead-Farmstead Resolution. We received the file late this afternoon, and I want to make sure all our numbers are accurate before putting that on. So Thursday, you will see the vote for Homestead-Farmstead so we can get the tax bills out. I also wanted to thank the administrative staff, any teachers that might have had hand in the budget presentation, and also Mrs. Krum for the hard work, Mrs. Lupo's hard work over these past few weeks that she's been here to help me. So thank you very much.
Moving on, we have our Capital Improvement Steering Committee. We did receive conditional approval to, Monday evening, I believe it was, to move forward with the building project from the township. Mr. DeSho, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Mrs. Krum, anything else you'd like to add on the steering project?
There are a couple outstanding items that yet we need to do, but from what we hear, that is moving along very well as well. So that's great. Yep.
Great. Next is Dover Eagle Foundation. We do have a meeting later this week with an individual that has expressed some interest in helping to drive the foundation forward. So we will be meeting with them on Thursday, I believe, this week. Did you have anything else you wanted to add related to the foundation?
Not yet.
Okay. York Adams Academy, Mr. Emig.
Our next meeting should be the last Tuesday of this month, and graduation will take place on Monday, June 4 at 7 o'clock.
York County School of Technology, Mr. DeLauder.
Nothing other than what the gentleman spoke of tonight.
All right. LIU Special Ed, Mr. DeSho, Mrs. Krum.
We have, we should have our budget for special education on the first week of June, so that's all I have.
I saw he has his "I voted" sticker on tonight, so Mr. Rauchhauser, legislative today.
Nothing to report.
They're all out working the polls today, right?
No, I wasn't working the polls and hardly anybody was there today.
All right, York Learning Center, Mr. Rauchhauser.
Nothing we should be meeting probably Tuesday, I think.
Mrs. Britton, PSBA.
Just getting ready for the fun of budget season, see what transpires with that, but nothing on that.
Mr. Benton, I see you're here and Mrs. Herman's still in her RV somewhere out in the west somewhere. Anything on the industrial committee?
No, our next meeting will be the last, the fourth Wednesday of the month. Our last meeting was canceled due to not enough to have a floor.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's Report, Mrs. Krum.
Just a couple things. I'd like to mention to the rest of the board that Mr. DeLauder, Mr. Cook, and Mr. Rauchhauser were recognized at the YCOW Recognition Dinner two weeks ago for five years of service on the board. So that was very exciting. Two people I would just kind of like to point out of, we have lots of things going on and lots of things ending. First, I'd like to do a shout out to Mrs. Johnson. We shared with you earlier in the year that she organized a weekend food program, and I want to tell you how this went. She and other administrators who could help would take a number of students from the Alternative Education Program, and the kids were absolutely fabulous. And they went and packed enough food for 205 students each week to bring home on Friday a backpack full of food, so they had food during the weekend. So I just want to thank Mrs. Johnson for all her hard work. That's very exciting, and we hope it grows next year. And the other person I would also like to thank is Mrs. Strasbaugh. Today, we finished up, or she finished up, the induction program for year one and year two teachers, and they came. We typically do recognize them at the board, but honestly, we had so many people tonight, we were worried about it. But she did a phenomenal job. She recognized them this afternoon. Offhand, do you know, Bobby, how many teachers, first and second year?
Eleven, first year, ten second.
So that's very exciting. So I'd like to thank her. She revised and revamped the entire program this year, gave it teeth, and they had some work to do, and she did a phenomenal job. So I'd like to thank her as well.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. Next would be our miscellaneous category. Anything else any of our board members have tonight?
Yes, I didn't want to cut into Mrs. Britton about PSBA, about they had put out that the House has passed that we eliminate the cross-filing for school board members, and it's in the Senate now, and they think we should contact senators and oppose the idea of eliminating cross-filing.
I think Charlie needs to take over for me.
Is there anything on the PSBA website for us to read about this or get some information?
I can double check there. I'm sure if it's an issue, I'm sure it's on there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I go. I don't know, it's the computer.
Yeah. They sent me about five different emails, all with different things, so it's kind of hard to keep track.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I have a few recognitions that I wanted to give shout outs to. I think Mock Trial was there. I saw something in the announcements with Mock Trial. I don't know if you can give us an update on what was there. I just saw a recognition where they recognized for second.
Yeah, they were invited to the York County Bar, I believe it was a luncheon, where they were recognized for their placement, and they were given, I know, I saw a phone gavel that they were all given, and I think she received a medal from the Bar Association as well, or the day of it, so.
And I also wanted to give a huge shout out to Jen Miller in the high school, who I am totally jealous of, got to meet Bill Nye and is in an episode of Bill Nye, season three. So I think that is super cool for Dover and for Mrs. Miller, and congratulations to her, and keep up the good work. So.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. This will be our last public comment period for the evening. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address. Seeing none, our next meetings will be this Thursday at 6:00 PM. We have our Board Committee Meetings, and at 7:00 PM, we have our Board Planning Meeting. And then our one board meeting in June related to action is June 19 at 7:00 PM. So if there is nothing else for the good of the order tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall I move?
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.